The project would provide infrastructure to serve growth consistent with the existing City of Lemoore general plan. And anticipation, when we wrote the document, there was anticipation that the Public Works Department for Kings County would not approve a permit request to cross Jackson Avenue with an open trench. And so, we assumed that, and the document assumed, that this will be done by boring under Jackson Avenue. Subsequent discussion with the county permit engineer indicates that he would permit an open trench with adequate traffic control. So, we wanted to put that in the record to leave that option open, because the document says different. There were three comment letters received on the mitigated negative declaration. One from Caltrans, one from Central Valley Flood Protection Board, and one from the Navy. So, the Caltrans letter noted that the project would have minimal impacts on the state facilities. Both the Caltrans and the Flood Protection Board letters noted that there would be permits required for project work within their jurisdiction. And neither letter offered comments or statements regarding any adverse environmental effects. The Navy's letter said that the project would cause no operational impacts to the Navy, and noted that the Navy has no objections or questions regarding the project. So, because of all this additional information, we would confirm that, we believe that none of the comments provided, since the document was made public, would require any revision, recirculation, or supplementation, that the document is acceptable as is. The scope of the project remains unchanged, and there are not any stated or imputed changes in the severity of environmental impacts that have been discussed in the document. So, in conclusion, we believe the council can proceed with the environmental evaluation and adopt the mitigated negative declaration. And thank you for indulging me by putting all that into the record.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. At this time, we will go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, bring it back to council for motion, any further discussion. A motion?
I'll make a motion to approve item four dash one as proposed.
Okay.
My second.
Motion by Mr. Chedester, and a second by Mr. Neal to approve item four dash one as proposed. Mr. Chedester?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
Thank you, council.
Motion is passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay, we will now go to new business, section five, report and recommendation, budget amendment, fire prevention inspector positions, resolution 2018 dash forty-four. Ms. Spear.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm here before you this evening to ask for two positions, the first of which is a fire prevention inspector position. When we brought the budget to you a few months ago, we did not have this position included. At that time, we thought it would be possible to continue operating as we had been with our two building inspectors. Fire life safety inspections have historically been handled out of the building inspection department. It's not something that's been handled through our Lemoore Volunteer Fire Association or department. And we have two full-time inspectors. Those inspectors are currently running between ten and eleven inspections per day on the building side alone. That has not left much time to keep up with our obligation legally, to continue to comply with the fire life safety inspections that were required to put forth every year. I have been doing a lot of conversations and work with Fire Chief German to discuss how we might be able to help bolster that responsibility and add additional personnel. And we came up with the idea of creating a fire prevention inspector position that would be within the fire budget. It takes specialized training in order to be eligible to provide those types of services. And although our building inspectors have a lot of that, there's a way that we can kind of enhance those skills by sending them to additional training. And so, the fire chief and I did some research, and we came up with this particular job description. It's largely based on a job description that was created during class and comp for a fire marshal. However, we're not quite ready for that. We do currently have somebody in our organization that acts as our fire marshal, and so, we're starting small, and we're going to grow with the need. This is not currently budgeted. So, anything that you guys approve tonight would go into the, dip into the general fund reserves in order to cover it. We're anticipating a mid-year hire. The salary range is specified in your job, in your staff report, excuse me. And the fully loaded rate, meaning salary and benefits for this personnel, is not expected to exceed more than ninety thousand dollars for the full year. So, we anticipate about a forty-five to fifty thousand dollar hit for the current fiscal year, depending on the hire date of the individual that we choose. I would like to call out, just for the benefit of the public who has not seen it, there's been an amendment to the job description that was provided and posted in the packet. A new one was given this evening. It has not changed the job description other than to report the training certificates that would be required slightly different, only because the state changed the name of the training courses, and it's different than what was listed in the first one. So, I just want to call those out. It would be completion of the State Fire Marshal Training Inspector Course one and two within one year of hire, and completion of the State Fire Marshal Training Investigations coursework within three years. The reason for that is the state is notorious for changing their curriculums and changing their titles, and it fluctuates on availability. So, it would be the city's intent to send them as soon as possible, based on availability and funding for training. Do I have any questions from council?
What would be the additional cost, since the fire department runs a very low budget? And what is their qualifications?
So, like, we discussed, it's forty-five, we anticipate about forty-five thousand dollars for the current fiscal year, and it would be ninety in future fiscal years. The qualifications require that they attend a training course through the State Fire Marshal Trainings Office to get certified in fire inspections and investigations. So, because we're a municipal agency that provides municipal fire service, we have a legal obligation through the government code and the Health and Safety Code to provide fire life safety inspections for all businesses within our city limits. That includes schools, hotels, motels, that sort of thing, as well as investigating cause and origin of fires. Our volunteer fire department does a great job of doing that, but as we grow and we experience more fires, it would be great to have somebody who's been through the specialized training to do that.
Okay. And where do they take that loan, that training at, where is that training based?
They offer them up and down the state. It just depends on when they take it, but it's offered through the State Fire Marshal Training Office.
Okay.
And our general fund reserves are in healthy condition to absorb this new position if voted right?
Yes. So, assuming council approved both positions, I'm coming to you with this evening, it would reduce the general fund by just under one percent. So, you had a forty-four percent general fund reserve, and we started this conversation, and you would have about a forty-three percent general fund reserve after the next item.
And that will carry on to the next fiscal year, approximately the same?
Correct.
I'm glad to see this position coming up, to be honest.
I am too.
It's a long time coming.
I think the fire chief is as well.
And the building inspectors have been doing it before this.
They have, but as we get more development in our city, we have more and more work and not enough people to do it. So, rather than give them more tasks, we've decided it would be best to hire somebody with, you know, the ability and the desire to get the specialized training to focus on fire-centric services.
Well, as we're waiting on the chief, but Michelle had mentioned they're doing ten to eleven inspections per day. That is per person, not combined. So, it's twenty to twenty-two inspections, and we try to allow them an hour in the morning to meet with residents that may have questions, and try to give them some time at their end of their day to do their paperwork. So, they're moving at a pretty good clip.
Is there anybody that, I mean, this sounds like something that would potentially be a pretty good opportunity for someone within the volunteer fire department that might be able to transition. Obviously, we'd have to go through the hiring process, but potentially, anyway.
We will be, if you approve it this evening, we will be doing an open recruitment, but we do know that there will be people within the fire department that are interested. And it is our goal to try to, you know, foster that relationship between this position and the volunteers.
So, no, this last question, Michelle. Starting with the forty-five K, starting with the forty-five K?
Yeah.
And then, you're doubling the income?
Six months versus twelve months.
Yeah, so, the position itself is going to cost us roughly ninety thousand dollars a year, but by the time we hire somebody, we'll be five to six months into the fiscal year. So, it'll only have a net effect of about six months' worth.
Okay.
Okay. What I was going to say, when she's talking about, we're kind of behind on this stuff. I've been with our secretary that we have, looking at some of our back fire plans and all that. We're digging stuff up that was last updated in oh-nine. And she has just sent out new fire plans to a hundred and twenty-five businesses that are delinquent on us. I don't know if delinquent's the right word, but that's where we're at. And this position would be able to do that basically Monday through Friday, you know, eight to five, or whatever, whatever you guys work. But that's what we're looking at. And there's other things that are involved in that, but it would be very advantageous to all of us.
Thank you.
Are you opening this outside of Kings County, or is this open?
Yes, we'll be doing an open recruitment, and so, that will allow anybody who's interested to apply. Inside the county, outside the county. Whoever wants to come and works for the wonderful City of Lemoore.
Thank you.
And it's public safety, public safety. Big time.
Awesome.
Okay. Let's see, questions? Any other, is there any public comment on this? Mr. Reed?
Tom Reed, ten sixty, for Lemoore. Since the, this new position will be getting training after they're hired, supposing that I was interested in the position, what minimum skills and/or education would be needed for me to apply? Thank you.
So, it's listed right here on the job description.
Yeah, I can answer that if you'd like.
Some people may already have the training that applies for it.
Yeah, and they might. So, it says here, experience training, experience and training guidelines, a typical way to obtain the knowledge and abilities to apply would be equivalent of the twelfth grade, with three years increasingly responsible experience in fire suppression and/or prevention.
Okay.
Okay.
So, no college background?
Not necessarily, no.
Okay. Is there any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to council for motion and further discussion.
I like the idea myself. I think that it's almost a legal obligation that we have to the citizens to have this position filled. It's not going to affect our general fund reserves by that much, and I think it's going to be necessary as we grow as a city.
Make a motion?
Okay.
Motion to approve five dash one is written.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Brown, and a second by Mr. Neal to approve five dash one. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Mr. Chedester?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Motion is passed. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Move to five dash two, report and recommendation. This is budget amendment, information technology analyst position, resolution twenty eighteen forty-five.
Me again. So, this is my second position that we have before you this evening. It's for an information technology analyst. This job description was actually previously approved by council. It came to you last October through the classification process that we used. When we brought the budget to you several months ago, we did not include this position, because we really believed at the time that we could go at least this fiscal year before needing the position. However, several things have changed in our organization. We're growing. Primarily, we have council-approved dispatch project. That project takes a lot of bandwidth, pardon the pun, to get the design completed and to ensure that that facility is designed to the appropriate level that we need in order to facilitate operations when we open. At the time that dispatch opens, we will be required to maintain twenty-four-seven IT support, because we cannot have a dispatch facility that does not have IT support in case something happens. We also have several other projects happening in other departments, and the desire and the wish to do things that are more technology savvy, if you will. So, online payment processes, integration of new software. We need a new phone system that's voice-over IP, because our phone systems are incredibly archaic, and we've resulted to buying phone parts through eBay, because our phones are so old, they don't manufacture them anymore. And so, with all of that comes a lot of, you know, staff member time to try to coordinate that, and none of us are IT experts. The county, county, I'm sorry, the city currently contracts for IT services through Jensen Consulting, and he's onsite eight hours a week. We've outgrown that. He does a great job of responding remotely when we have an issue, and our city clerk actually serves as our onsite IT staff for emergency needs, and she does a great job. But she's also our city clerk and our risk manager and our HR manager, and so, she has, she wears a lot of hats. So, we started talking about our options, and we decided that it would be best to come to you and ask for a full-time position. We need somebody to help integrate our phone systems and monitor our cell phone systems and help us when the little things happen, like when we come into work in the morning and our computers literally don't turn on. So, those kind of things, we need help with. This position at the requested range would be fully loaded at a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars a year. However, the city currently pays roughly twenty-five to thirty-five thousand dollars a year for the consulting services. It depends on how many hours he's here and what type of work he's doing. And we also pay about forty-five thousand dollars a year to the county for IT services, because our police department is on the county servers. So, at the time that dispatch is done, and we no longer need IT services from the county, you'll see a forty-five thousand dollar savings from that contract, and a thirty-five thousand dollar savings from the consultant's contract. So, that's approximately eighty grand. So, you're looking at about a forty thousand dollar net change for the next fiscal year. For the current fiscal year, it's about a thirty-two thousand dollar increase, because we will have to continue to pay county IT until we don't need their services any longer. And we've already paid Jensen Consulting some fees that he's already incurred for the existing fiscal year. So, do you have any questions?
What time, what is the timeframe for that?
We'd like-
Before we just, when we're just done with him?
Well, we probably have about eighteen months before we're ready to start dispatch, maybe slightly longer. You know what? I'm on public record, I'm going to say twenty-four months.
Twenty-four months?
Yes.
Okay.
Scratch that eighteen months, I just told you. Too mad, that's gone.
Okay.
But, as far as this year, and when we want to hire this individual, as soon as possible. We're currently designing the dispatch facility, and Bryce is doing a great job helping us, that's Jensen Consulting.
So, we're looking at two years, two-year window?
Yeah.
Okay.
As an estimate. Plus or minus six months. That's for getting rid of, that's for disbending with the county. But I want to hire this person as soon as possible. The numbers you have in this document tonight anticipate a November hire. That's pretty aggressive. And IT positions normally get a lot of applicants, because there's a lot of people looking to go into that field. So, I would say sometime between November and January, if you approve it, we should have somebody on board to help us.
I have a quick follow-up question, actually, not about the position, but you mentioned where our data, our servers are hosted, and so, police departments of county, we are being hosted where?
Here. We do it on our own, and our servers are at the CMC. I'm sorry, I'm looking at my resident IT expert.
Okay, and I'm just curious with this changeover, if we'll consolidate our server costs in any way, or if that's going to be included in the cost of the consulting, or the hire, I shouldn't say, because we're going to have to, eventually as we grow, be able to host our own servers and not be able to have to pay for them to be hosted somewhere else. And with the dispatch center project, are we going to bring that all in-house, or instead of just paying the county?
Oh, we host now, but I was going to tell you, that's why I'm hiring an IT person, because I don't know how to answer those questions. So, we currently host our own servers. When we bring on dispatch, though, I mean, we're paying county for that service, but we're also going to bring on more need internally, because now we have all those computers and MDTs and things that we don't currently service that we would have to.
I'm just thinking of unexpected costs with the new, with expanding our IT, basically. And I'm all for that, by the way, but we have to also anticipate, as we go further, to make sure to budget for things like hosting our, like, our own servers.
So, Janie, please feel free to stop me if I say something incorrect, but in the IT budget, it's broken up into several different parts, and the city already budgets for things like servers and equipment, and the things that we need in order to host our own services. Our consulting price is completely separate. So, the only, the only credit I'm talking about is what we're paying for contractual services, but as far as equipment and those kind of things, we already plan and budget for those.
Right, and that's why I was asking if we'll be moving forward in a different direction with this new hire, because it seems like we're moving in this whole other direction.
Yes, and we've already been talking to our consultant about our needs, and so, we have been talking about things like servers and switches and all those good things that we're probably going to need in the future. So, the answer is yes, we're planning for that.
Awesome, thank you.
And also, this IT person would also support, I can see, our utility side of the house, because of our SCADA systems and all that PLC controls and things of that nature that we have. So, it's going to touch every facet in our city. It's going to touch everything, and it's just, with things growing and things changing and new things coming onboard, it's just part of growth.
Definitely excited to see this.
So, hiring that one individual would take care of the whole IT, if there's a problem?
Uh, yes. So, think of it this way, right now, we spend roughly thirty-five thousand dollars for about eight hours of onsite service a week. He does remote in and phone calls and that sort of thing. For a hundred and sixteen, you're going to get forty-plus hours. This will be an exempt position, that's salaried, so they're going to be on call twenty-four seven, once dispatch comes onboard, and even now, if we have a server go down, somebody has to help us triage that, and Bryce currently does. So, it is going to give us a more robust IT service.
One person?
In a perfect world, I would love more, but I'm not going to ask you for that.
Okay.
We're going to baby-step our way into this.
Okay.
Well, I'm excited about this. I love that we're moving forward with new technologies, especially with our bill payment process and getting the new software that we're getting. And really, I think that's a sign of really good growth for us, because we're going to be able to facilitate better services, better customer service for our citizens who have been asking for more technology in our city. So, I think it's a great job.
I know where I work, our IT department is everything to us, and I don't know how you guys have done it without anybody that really takes the bull by the horns on it. So, kudos to you guys to have gone this long without an IT designated person, so.
And I really, I don't mean to interrupt you, I'm sorry, but I really do want to give credit to the consultant that we've had. He's been with us for over ten years. He does a great job. He's magnificent. Janie provides wonderful support to him onsite. This isn't because they're not doing a great job. I think we just have a greater need than he can provide right now.
All right. Any questions?
Yes, if we're, if we're on a tight budget, I ain't trying to play the devil's advocate, but if we're on a tight budget, how can we afford to pay that amount?
Well, you can, if you're willing to dip into your reserves, and that's what we discussed earlier. So, you had a forty-four percent reserve before you adopted the last item, and with the adoption of both of these items or approval, you're only losing less than one percent in your general fund reserve. The question becomes, if you choose not to go this route, we're still going to have to find another solution. Because once we have dispatch, and even before then, we need more IT services than we're currently getting. So, it's going to be a cost to the general fund, one way or the other. This just seemed to be the best option as far as getting the level of service we needed, and it's a city employee, so they're with us all the time. We're not sharing them with other, you know, entities, or we're not getting different individuals from the same firm coming. There's going to be institutional knowledge of our systems that we have with us every day.
Plus, you would have to have an on-call contracted IT person, on-call. I mean, and you're in Lemoore, and those people, I don't know where our IT person is dispatched from now, but when the police department goes down, and we're there, we got the dispatch center and the fire department, and we have to dispatch people, you're talking about life safety.
Right.
So, you know, and we are, it looks like, as you stated earlier, you know, we are capturing some costing that we're already paying out. So, it's not the full-blown cost of the position. It's partial. And then, it's also going to support, I mean, I don't know, it's probably as needed, but, you know, I would see, think that some of that money would also be pulled out of enterprise funds if it had to support the utility portion. So, there, that would, I mean, I don't know how much it's, as it adds to the basis, and I know our SCADA systems are starting to get ramped up and things of that nature, so there's going to be some ringouts on that, so, you know, and like, you know, everybody's basically stating, the city's growing and we need it. I don't see how we can deal without it.
The only thing I'd ask, or request, please, when we're doing this hire, is that we keep in mind the future, and this part of, the reason for this hire, because, I mean, we're really just kind of have a Band-Aid fix of consulting work to get IT services, and we're just expanding. So, it's kind of a necessary cost. But, the ability to speak at least two languages, English and Spanish, would be a major plus, because we're talking about communication, and communication to the public, and expanding customer service. And in all of our departments, it's always important. But I would think the most important, the face of the city, the communication we're giving from the city to the community should be somebody who can speak in the language that a lot of our community members speak, and be able to do both. And I think in this area especially, that should not be hard to find.
So, thank you for your comment. I do just want to note, though, that that is not a requirement of this job description.
I understand, that's why I'm making the statement on.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we understood that.
I'm excited. I think that we need to be proactive in advance of the dispatch center, because that's a big deal for us, and it's a necessary, I think, a necessary step for us to take.
I appreciate all the sacrifice that you guys have made up to this point. I would venture to say we're probably one of the few cities of our size that don't have a full-time IT person by now. So, that just tells me how hard you all have been working in the past to make these kinds of things work, hodgepodge-ing it together, you know, with our consultant and so forth. And even in this case, I, I mean, it's very admirable that we're trying to keep the cost down with only one person, but realistically, that's a lot to ask of one person to be on call twenty-four seven, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year.
It absolutely is.
That's not realistic, but I know that you guys will do it somehow. You will make it work, because you've made it work up to this point, and that's just a testament to the dedication of our staff and that kind of thing. So, I appreciate it, and I think this is a very necessary move for us at this point. Is there any questions? Mr. Reed?
Tom Reed, ten sixty, for Lemoore. Since you are going to be considering hiring one individual, and as the mayor so eloquently said, you know, twenty-four hours, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year, I do hope that there's some vacation time planned for this individual. And I hope that somewhere, you're going to have to have some additional cost for backup for this individual, when they are away on vacation, maybe sick, maybe away to a trade show or some training somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? Okay, we'll bring it back to our council for a vote and any further discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve item five dash two.
My second.
Okay, so, there's a motion by Mr. Chedester, and a second by Mr. Neal. Any further discussion? Okay, so.
We're not going to be hiring nobody else, just that one IT, that's still on my mind. Now, next you.
Mayor pro temp.
On this agenda item, yes.
On this particular agenda item, yes. So, you know, Mr. Reed's comments have been taken into consideration. Staff has been discussing other options. I don't want to let the cat out of the bag yet. I do not plan, don't quote me, in this fiscal year, to come to you and ask for another body. There are ways to help back up employees that don't require hiring additional personnel.
We've been doing it already.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so, we've got a motion.
I didn't want to say it, but her name is Janie Manayak.
Yep, exactly. So, there's a motion by Mr. Chedester, and a second by Mr. Neal to approve item five dash two. Mr. Chedester?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to section six, city council reports and requests. Ms. Blair?
Well, I had the pleasure of meeting with a foreign dignitary this, last week. A friend from the Australian consulate was traveling through, and sat down, had lunch, and had a lovely discussion.
Um, well, I had the pleasure of meeting with a foreign dignitary this, uh, last week. Um, a friend from the Australian consulate was traveling through and sat down and had lunch and had a lovely discussion about, uh, the Central Valley and the community here and, uh, and I just wanted to let everybody know that.
Thank you.
Uh, attended the, uh, last week, I attended the twenty eighteen annual meeting, California League of Cities. Um, I have a trip agenda here, so I'll give it to the clerk so people can see what, what I did and what I attended. Uh, uh, 'cause the city did send me down there on your taxpayers' dollar. Some of the things I did, I did go to and I did, uh, attend was, uh, at these flaws and principles training. Uh, went into some, uh, economic development training, uh, finance, um, some of the other things is, uh, we attended some stuff on IT, is what we talked about tonight. Challenges and opportunities, rural cities, things of that nature. Um, once again, economic development, um, and some other hot topics in California. Um, I did bring back a bunch of stuff, gave it to staff. Um, even some stuff on grants and stuff like that, so, um, I hope, um, I did well and, you know, represented the city well. And I did have to vote, uh, on the two items that, uh, that, uh, I got guidance from council last time and, and the, um, both those items, um, one was, uh, they both passed. They both passed. I voted on one, yes, and abstained on the other one, but both of them passed. And if you wanted the details, uh, city clerk will have it and it'll be on the agenda or be on the, uh, city website. Other thing I wanna say, state is, is just to let everybody know, um, is that our agendas, and this is for the people that's, that's tuning in too, our agendas and all of our documentation, everything that this council gets, our packages, is on the city website, lamore.com. If you go on there, you're gonna get everything that we get. Uh, so, uh, please take a look at that. Um, you know, if you do have questions, you know, uh, and this is for our Facebook audience out there too, you know, uh, please, please, uh, come to the council, uh, ask questions, um, you know. Uh, but the information's out there and we're trying to promote it as much as possible. Uh, and if they have any ideas of how we can even do a better job promoting it, let us know, but, uh, we're always willing to learn. So, thank you.
Tomorrow, I have my monthly Kings County mosquito abatement meeting and we are going to possibly award a bid to a contractor to build their new facility. It's been in the works for a long time and the facility they're in is extremely old and outdated. So I'll be able to report next council meeting how that went. Thank you.
Thank you. I was right there with Councilman, um, Dave Brown and I appreciate the city sending us both there. And I think, I appreciate seeing some of our, uh, some of my Facebook friends come out here I've been knowing all my life. Basically, we're brothers and sisters. Uh, Shelly, I'm glad she's here today and I don't mean to embarrass her. My wife, she's always here. So I, I, I love her support and you guys come out, more of you guys come out. I'm looking at Facebook right now. Well, anyway, let's go back. I'm, I went into a rabbit hole, but let's go back to what I went and I experienced in Long Beach. How to use Facebook in a positive way. Uh, they had a class on that, eight fifteen to nine thirty. Planned by the, uh, Latino caucus. I also went to how to avoid harassment claims, city officials. That was an interesting class I went to as well. Thank you, City of Lamore. And as we talk about free water advocate. They had this, so I'm gonna share all this with the city manager. Also have a, although you have one, a prop one. I'm gonna go ahead and give you that still. You have a lot of them to deal with. Uh, covering playground, covering playground equipment. Here's another one I want you to look at. This was all at the expo, so I was at the expo after lunch. I was just going through it, finding everything I could, you know, to better our city.
You teamed up. You went one way and I went the other.
Yeah, that's awesome. And so free water advocate was, go ahead, hand that to him. Uh, now I know you, you went to this one, uh, precision is on, uh, concrete cutting for the sidewalks. Instead of pulling the trees up, they have this machine that I heard you have, you guys got one as well. Our city has one as well, but they said half, uh, it's four dollars, uh, per square inch, per square foot. So you can have that as well. Uh, possible funding for parks. I want you to go ahead and take this one too, so our parks could look good and we could put water back in there. Get our grass back. We won't be looking like Mojave Desert, so I appreciate all that. God bless.
I've got just a couple of things to report on. First thing, I was able to attend the, the event out at the Surf Ranch, the Saturday event. Obviously well-attended. You, from the time I walked into the gate till I sat down, I think I heard about five or six different languages being spoken, Portuguese, French, Spanish, Italian, and then some other ones that I didn't pick up a single word. But, uh, I don't speak those languages except, except Spanish, but I could kinda figure what they were. Um, a lot of people all around, sat by some people from Southern California. And then I was able to watch the event later on, on television. It was on CBS, I think. Lamore, California, up there the whole time. I just keep thinking, we cannot pay for that kind of marketing. And that is gonna ha- it's, without a doubt, it's gonna be something good for us. We just gotta stay on top of it. All the people out there in that organization are very, very community-minded. I actually met the engineer who designed and invented the wave machine. Um, they're building another one, I think, in Japan for the twenty twenty Olympics that are coming up. So, yeah, we're just very fortunate to have that right in our own backyard and I think we really need to capitalize that, on that as much as we possibly can. Um, I will be attending the public safety dinner, um, this Friday along with Chief Smith. Let's see, there was, I did receive an email from a gentleman. Um, he owns a business downtown, Lou Bumpus is his name. He owns Lou's Tattoo Shop and he did have some concerns about the Downtown Merchants Association. Um, uh, feeling of maybe not all, they're getting as, as much input as they need when it comes to the types of events that they are planning. Um, it's good, I, and I explained to him that for a long time, we hadn't had any meetings at all until we reduced the number of members so we could have a quorum. And so at least now we're meeting, we're starting that dialogue, but I think it is important to remind, um, the Downtown Merchants Association. I don't know if there's someone that's assigned to that committee from us. Is there somebody from our staff? So you might wanna reach out to Mr. Bumpus. He owns Lou's Tattoo Shop and just hear his concerns, just make sure that he knows that he's being heard. And, um, last thing, so I will be attending a, uh, an event in Fresno on Thursday for the Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Central California. Um, I'm not sure if I mentioned it, but I was, I did, um, get appointed or as, as a, a member of the Board of Directors on that committee and I'm very, I feel very fortunate because I know how important our, um, youth, youth programs are for us. And I think that's given us a voice here in Kings County. That organization represent the Big Brothers and Big Sisters in Madera, Tulare, Kings and Fresno County and they had no membership at all on their board from Kings County. So I hope to bring more attention here and more focus in all the programs that they have. We, um, you may or may not know, we do have a high school big program that's going on between Lamore High School and Lamore Elementary, but I wanna expand that to some of the other elementary schools, uh, potentially Cinnamon Elementary would be a really good fit, I think. So looking for help on that funding and that sort of thing, but, um, that's it for me. Thank you.
If I may.
Yes.
Uh, I would like to ask you a question, Mayor. Uh, did you ever, have they ever brung up anything to do with, I know they're doing great things for the Surf Ranch out there. Uh, how about forest for the kids? Do they have anything like surf practice or they, if some kids out here, although even Kings County wanna go out and surf, do, would they ever bring something to the kids?
Um, I have not asked that question directly, but I think, um, it might be worth asking. Probably be a good, good opportunity.
There's a person that, that reached out and, uh, I don't know if I'm talking out loud or the city.
Yeah, council, uh, council comments should be reserved to short. I mean, you're starting to get it, I'm not getting too, too much discussion. And council, the city manager did mention that the Surf Ranch is coming on October second, I believe, as for a study session. So that might be the better time to hold your questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, that we will adjourn our meeting. Thank you for being here.
Okay. Very good time.